Welcome, everyone. You're in the November 14th of Eugene. Welcome everyone here at home. And I believe our first item is to finish the work we started last time, right?
That's true. Thanks. Tonight, we're going to finish up what we weren't able to get to last time and primarily be talking about the analysis we've been doing for potential urban growth boundary expansion areas. And Carolyn Weiss is going to start it off.
Yep. So, I'm just going to provide a little bit of context for what we're talking about tonight. In our last work session on Wednesday, we were able to get through two of the three items. The first two were identifying what our public land need is, and then our current update of where we are with our single-family housing land need. Alyssa Hanson here will be talking to you about some of the analysis we've done about potential expansion areas for single-family housing. But before we do that, I'm just going to share a little bit of context with you. So, for those maybe just tuning in for the first time, this is where we are in the Envision Eugene process. We're in the strategy refinement phase. This is the phase where we are clarifying what our land need is for the various uses, such as industrial, commercial, public, and residential, including single-family, which we're talking about right now. We'll be moving into the implementation phase in the next couple of months probably, where we will begin to go through the formal adoption process. And, of course, we have seven pillars of Envision Eugene, which is really what we are basing our work on, and which are the result of a year-plus of community input that we did mostly in 2010, and in part with the help of the Community Resource Group. So, this is actually the last slide that we showed in Wednesday's presentation regarding single-family land needs. So, we thought this was just a good transition into our next topic. What this slide shows across the top are various housing mixes, and then at the bottom row shows an approximation of what our, the acreage need would be under each of these housing mixes. We did want to let you know we're still kind of finalizing a few items in here, and you'll notice that they're still expressed as a range. However, under three of the four scenarios, we are showing potential for an urban growth boundary expansion for single-family homes. And so, because of that, we have begun the analysis that is required by the state to help us identify where that expansion would occur if necessary. So, with that, I will hand it over to Alyssa, who will tell you about the work we've done.
Thank you. So, as Carolyn mentioned, we may not be able to accommodate all of our single-family housing within our existing urban growth boundary, and that would require an urban growth boundary expansion. Now, that process is tightly controlled by state law. There's a whole host of statutes and rules that really prescribe how and where we can expand. I'm going to provide you a little information on those tonight, as well as walk you through where we are in this analysis of these lands. So, this map represents the land use designations of those lands that are outside our urban growth boundary. I know it's not easy to read, but I'll get you to the punchline here. It's important, this map's important because state law tells us what lands we must consider first for expansion, and that is based on their land use designations. So, when looking at an urban growth boundary expansion, our first priority of lands that we can consider are those lands that are designated residential, commercial, industrial, or basically non-resourced lands. Those are the lands that we must consider first. Our second priority of lands are those which are considered marginal lands, and then our third category are those that are considered farm and forest. So, really, our last lands that we can look at for expansion are the farm and forest lands. I know the colors aren't great up here, but the, our first priority are showing kind of as a yellow or an army green, and those are the residential, commercial, or industrial lands. The marginal lands are showing as kind of an orangish. They're mostly along the southern boundary. And then, everything else, so everything that's kind of green or brown, those are our farm and forest lands surrounding us. So, moving on to the next slide, so those are called priority lands. These are our first priority lands that we must consider for expansion. So, if we're going to be expanding, these are the areas we have to consider first. This represents about 2,000 acres right here, and we sent letters to all of these property owners about a month ago, just to let them know that they're in our study area, to provide them information, and really to be transparent about the process. We had some drop-in open houses, we had a phone line, and we had some information on the web, just to let people know about the process, and then if they had any questions about what it might mean in the event that there was an urban growth boundary expansion in their area. One of the things we did include in the letter was that, obviously, some of these areas, if you know them, are not suited for urban residential expansion areas, and we know that. We're, we are following the process, you know, prescribed to us by state law that we must consider them first. But the good news is, is there, our next step is actually, we're able to screen some of these lands out. So, our next step is actually evaluating these lands to see if they're suitable, and that's looking at whether or not they're, do they have constraints on them that make them not buildable, or make them not usable for residential expansion. These are the five factors we start with, which is, are they severely constrained by natural hazards? Are they constrained by natural resource protection measures, such as are there, you know, goal five setbacks, or wetlands, and such? Next would be, are they constrained by severe slopes? And then, are they, are they within the flood plain, or other flood hazard areas? And then, finally, you know, can they be served by public service, public facilities, wastewater, storm water, water, transportation? So, our analysis of these is currently in progress, but what I want to do next is just walk you through those areas I showed on the previous map, and kind of let you know what we know about them at this point. So, I'm going to start with the area circled in red. So, the lands I'm going to be talking about are actually those that are highlighted in kind of greenish up there. And what I'll do is zoom in. This map is just kind of for context. You can see it's just Off River Road here in North Eugene. Kind of zooming in, this is, for context, the red dotted line is actually our existing urban growth boundary, and these first priority lands are showing as outlined in black. So, there's three of them here on this map. River Road is over here, Willamette River over here, this is Beacon along here, and then River Loop 1 is over here. This represents about 270 acres, and it, as you can see, it's, there are some single-family homes, there are also some, you know, pretty fairly decent-sized lots here, and some farm activity going on. Now, this next slide, actually, this shows constraints. If you remember back to that list I showed, this has a number of those constraints, and I'll walk you through them. So, this sea foamish color is actually the flood plain. Down here in the lower right, this, this green color is floodway, and I promise not to get your eyes there, Mayor. This green along here, those are protected, either protected riparian areas or protected wetlands. And then, these two green lines here represent the Willamette River Greenway boundary. So, the lands between those two lines are within the Greenway boundary. Also, not showing on this map, but kind of an important consideration in this area are the, the high-value farm soils. This is clearly an area of high-value farm soils. You've heard throughout Envision Eugene, you know, that those are very valuable to our community for numerous reasons. So, you will have to stop and think whether or not this is, you know, an area that would be compatible, you know, with those farming activities if there was residential expansion here. So, really, given the constraints on, on these particular areas, we don't find that this is a likely area for residential expansion. So, I'm going to move on to the next area. So, just so you know, this is the second of eight areas. This is just moving west a little bit. This area is located between Highway 99 and Prairie Road. It is just north of Aubrey here, which is co-terminus with the urban growth boundary. There are two priority land areas. This is the first, the L-shaped, and the other is the triangle over here. This represents about 87 acres, and they're kind of a mix of, and you can kind of tell by the development pattern, it's a mix of single-family, as well as quite a bit of These are the constraints showing. Once again, the sea foam over here is flood plain, there's a spot of wetlands over here. Probably the biggest limiting factor in this area, if you can see that orangish color that just showed up, that actually shows all the industrial designation that is inside the urban growth boundary. So, given, given the amount of industrial development we expect to occur, or is already happening in this area, it doesn't seem that, that these two pockets would be very compatible areas to, to expand for single-family residential housing. So, I'm going to move on to the third area, which is located kind of west of Eugene. It's along Green Hill and Royal. This is about 100 acres, and you can see Green Hill there is along with the urban growth boundary, and then Royal kind of goes east-west along here. And then, you can see the channel there is the Amazon diversion channel. This area is surrounded predominantly by farmland, and also, there's quite a lot of parkland, which is showing in the green. Kind of to the east of this area is much, a lot of the West Eugene wetlands complex. Let's see. In terms of constraints, once again, sea foam represents the flood plain, and then the, the bright green represents the protected wetlands, or riparian areas. You see a new color on here, which is the orange boundaries. So, within that orange boundary, that boundary is actually called the airport noise contour, and it is an area that the FAA actually strongly discourages new residential development within, given, for its safety and noise concerns, you know, given the proximity to the airport there. So, for these reasons, we find that this is not a likely area for residential expansion. Kind of moving south, these pieces are located off Crow Road and Willow Creek. Let's see, that's a little harder to see with all the trees here. There's a pocket here, and here, and here, as well as down over here, I can't even, oh, and right over here is kind of the fifth little piece. This is about 165 acres of residentially designated land, surrounded by farm and forest land. You'll notice that only two of them are also actually contiguous with the urban growth boundary, the two of the smallest ones there. Let's see, there's a little bit of parkland, Ridgeline Parkland down there to the south. And then, in terms of constraints, oh, brother. This dark area, which is kind of hard to see because of the trees, is, actually shows steep slopes, generally slopes that are greater than 25 percent. Some other limiting factors in this particular area are, are services. We've had some preliminary discussions with E-Web. This would be an area that would be difficult for them to serve. We also know that there are some existing transportation constraints on both West 11th and 18th that would need to be resolved. And then, finally, as I mentioned, much of this land is actually isolated from the urban growth boundary, and we can't create an island of the city of Eugene. So, we would need to justify, you know, bringing in some intervening, some intervening lands, which would be farm or forest lands, to create a logical boundary and expansion area. So, kind of for these reasons, we think that these areas aren't really ideal for residential expansion. All right. Moving on to the next area, this is the fifth area. It's located along Gimble Hill and Bailey Hill. There are four pockets, since it's kind of still dark, I'll point these out again. There's one over here, one here along the urban growth boundary, another one up here along the urban growth boundary, and then finally, one down here. This represents about 135 acres total of rural res, of residential designated lands. It's predominantly surrounded by forest lands, and there's actually quite a bit of parkland in this area as well, shown in the green. In terms of constraints, as you can see, there's a little bit of wetlands, once again with the green, and if you can see, the brown, brownish area, once again, represents steep slopes. Also, there, there are some service issues here. Site is similar in the previous site, in that it may be difficult to provide water service here, and these roads do feed into West 11th and West 18th as well. And as Heather mentioned last week, this is right adjacent to the area where they're still studying wastewater for the Willow Creek area. So, there's some of the lots here where, inside the urban growth boundary, that we haven't determined their entire capacity because of the wastewater situation. However, if new, if we are going to plan for new wastewater, oops, wrong button. If we are going to plan for wastewater service in this area, it might makes, there might be some efficiencies gained from including these two parcels in the urban growth boundary to help with that extension of wastewater, and if we could get the, get it extended to those areas. So, we're going to continue to study this area to see if it makes sense, particularly once we find out more about providing wastewater inside the urban growth boundary here. Moving on to the sixth area, this is along the southern border of the urban growth boundary at the, kind of the intersection of Chambers and Crest. It represents about 485 acres of residential land that's surrounded by, outside it's surrounded predominantly by farm and forest land. There's a few pieces of parkland here and there. In terms of constraints, there are some protected wetlands there along the Spencer Creek. You can see in the bright green, there are some slopes as well, as you can maybe see in the, in the brownish-orange there. And there are some moderate service issues here as well. Some of the things this area does have going for it is that it is contiguous for quite a portion over here to our existing urban growth boundary, and to existing single-family neighborhoods. It also doesn't have as severe slopes and wetlands as some of the other areas, and, you know, I think you could imagine single-family residential being compatible with single-family residential, so that's a plus as well. So, given these reasons, we will be focusing more attention on this area as we move forward in our study. One thing I do want to point out is that we recognize that it kind of has a bit of an unusual shape. The good news is, we do have some ability to square it off, or come up with a logical urban growth boundary expansion, or a logical urban growth boundary, if this is indeed an area where we expand. So, keep that in mind, that we wouldn't have to take in such a crazy shape. Moving on to our seventh area, this is southeast of Eugene. There's two pockets, one's off Dillard and one's off Fox Hollow. So, the, the little piece is off Fox Hollow, and then you can see Dillard along here. This represents about 750 acres. It's predominantly surrounded by forest land, as well as the Ridgeline Park system. In terms of constraints here, there are some steep slopes, as you can see, kind of over in this vicinity. Probably the most problematic issue here is, is providing services. This would be an area that would, given the steep slopes, and, you know, the terrain and the street layout, it would be problematic to provide water and wastewater service to this area. And also, given that Dillard is really the only street running in and out of that larger pocket, transportation would also be a concern. Another limiting factor here are the existing development patterns, given the, this was recently subdivided, at least within the last five to 10 years, and given the lot and the street and the home layout here, it really, we think it would be difficult to achieve urban levels of residential development here. So, for these reasons, we don't think that this is a likely area for residential expansion. All right. Moving on to the eighth and final area of priority one lands. This one is located just north of 30th Avenue, north of Lane Community College, and west of I-5. And there's two pockets. There's a little small pocket over here of residential land, and then this piece is predominantly residential, although there's some commercial and industrial here along the highway. This represents about 110 acres, and it's surrounded predominantly by forest lands, although there's a little bit of farmland, as well as Lane Community College there. In terms of constraints, oh, and here's the parkland in that area. In terms of constraints, once again, there's some slopes up here at this hill, and then there's some protected wetlands along the south boundary there. And then, we know that there's some moderate service issues, particularly with transportation at 30th and I-5, this intersection here. So, although this area does have some challenges, given its proximity to Lane Community College, as well as to I-5 and other existing development, we're going to continue to study this area as we move forward. So, in terms of next steps in our urban growth boundary expansion analysis, we're going to be taking a closer look at all of these areas, and these are some of the things we'll be looking at. We'll be taking a closer look at, at public services, or public facilities and services, and that includes wastewater, storm water, water, and transportation. So, we're going to be looking at, what would it take to actually serve these, you know, approximate costs, you know, and how, just really how difficult or how easy it would be to serve each of these, and we'll be coordinating with the utility providers on those. We'll also be looking at land use patterns, and that means we'll be looking at, would residential development in these areas be compatible with surrounding farm and forest activities? We'll also be looking at, you know, given the existing development patterns of these areas, will they make sense to develop over time, you know, as urban residential areas? We'll also be taking a closer look at the natural resources. We know that they, some of them have some protected areas, and we want to just ensure that, you know, that that is indeed all that there is, or are there more natural resources than, than are showing? We'll also be looking at housing capacity, and that means we'll be giving an analysis to see, you know, how many homes do we think feasibly could be built in those areas, and does that match with what our need would be? And then, last but not least, we'll be gathering more public input. We do have an online open house that is currently going on at envisioneugene.org, and that goes on through November 28th. We also just recently rescheduled the public hearing on single-family and public lands, and that will be held on the evening of Monday, November 28th. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
I wonder why we're going into the expansion for single-family housing before we decide about the ratio of single-family to multifamily? If we had 50/50, as I understand, or 40/60, we wouldn't need to expand for single-family housing.
That, that's correct. So, that decision has not been finalized yet. We're just trying to make efficient use of our time and do the analysis, so that, once that decision is made, we will be further along down that path, should an expansion be necessary. But nothing, you know, it's just analysis at this point. It doesn't lock us into any, any future at this, at this time.
Okay. Well, it seems to me like not an efficient use of time if it's something that's not needed, and that's just a comment, but I, and I had another question. We keep talking about the seven pillars. Have we ever adopted the seven pillars?
Yeah.
No?
No, council voted to have us forward that as a document. I think that was back in March, when you took action. Unanimous that you put that forward as our draft document. So, the, all the work that we're doing is based on those seven pillars as sort of the framing values of the plan.
So, when I come in with a recommendation, my recommendation will be, here are the seven pillars. There'll be some strategies a part of that, and then there'll be conversation. I'll have a recommended ratio of single-family to multifamily, which then affects the UGB one way or the other. So, that will be a part of, all part of my recommendation that I plan to bring to the council on the 14th of December.
Wow. That's fast, but...
Well, except we've been working on it for two years, and so...
It's fast for right now. But, so, again, we haven't really adopted the, I'm not saying I'm against the seven pillars, but we haven't really adopted them.
You haven't formally adopted them, as far as I know, but you will, but I'll be bringing those forward as part of my recommendation, which then we would hope that the council will adopt moving forward. Not on the 14th, I should mention.
Oh, mhm. 14th will be our last meeting this year, won't it?
Right. I'll bring my, forward my recommendation, and then, we would not be asking council to consider taking action, and action until at least mid-February.
Mhm. I would hope we wouldn't be doing anything drastic during the holiday period, since people are not really paying attention at that time. Thank you.
Do you have anything drastic to do?
Drastic, expanding.
Well, I don't think, what I do think is fair to say is, they have given us heads-up, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're, you're heading forward a recommendation, and you've indicated what that recommendation is at this time. So, we, we've been, we know what's coming, and it doesn't mean we have to agree, but we know what's, what's coming, and that you will be making a recommendation, and that the number's out there, and that number, if you should accept it, does require some addition to the urban growth boundary. So, that, you know, it's coming, right?
Right.
That's fair to say. All right. I've got Alan, and Mike, and then Pat.
So, at the end, I was kind of hoping for a summary slide that kind of took the eight places that you've identified, and kind of said, yes, no, how many acres, how many units. But we didn't get that far yet?
No, we're still working on the, the, how, the analysis that would show us how many, you know, units, or how many homes we could feasibly see in those areas, so...
Because you didn't bonk out several of them, like almost all of them.
Quite a few of them, yes.
Yeah. I guess the, the questions I had were about number six and number seven, the, the two in the southeast part of the city.
That would be the Crest Drive area, and then the...
Dillard, Fox Hollow.
Right. Those, especially the, the seventh one, it's, I was tracking along until you said, "And that's likely not going to be developed as, as residential," because it seemed like it already was, and was...
I, I guess I'm, yeah, to clarify, at, at urban levels. So, most of these are residentially developed, but they're at, you know, if you, at rural levels, so five-acre parcels, 10-acre parcels, two-acre parcels, but we're envisioning that this would be, you know, an extension of the city, so it would be at densities closer to what you see inside the city limit. So, in that particular area, we're looking at the existing development patterns, and it looks like it would be difficult, based on those development patterns, to see how that area would, you know, transform into an, an urban area.
Okay. But it could be in UGB and be residential, but not be at the density of urban?
That, that is one, it could happen.
So, when will we see that summary slide?
That is a good question.
Well, we'll be working on the analysis over the next couple of weeks. Trying to think, by December 14th, when we have the city manager's recommendation, we'll certainly have it by then. I'm just kind of wondering if we'll have a chance before then, either by memo or in work session, to provide that information to you.
Because that was my next question for John, was on the 14th, when we, when you bring that back. Will it bring back, here's my 55, 45, 55, 45, and here's how many acres of residential we need, and here's the three areas?
What I would envision on the single-family, and you guys can chime in, is yes, and what would happen on the actual locations? It may say it's X acres, and here's the two slot places, or three places that I'd recommend we find that, and it may not be specific a line on that, and so it would say, here are the...
Might not completely line up.
Right. So, here's the, the places where I would recommend, for these reasons, that we look for those acres. And so, that would take some others off the table.
Okay. And it'd be probably a little bit too much to ask what the houses will look like on this.
I'll tell you the colors, too.
Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the, the look away from the Dillard area. I, I would like to see that anything we do bring in is urbanizable, as opposed to what I guess one could call kind of phantom inventory that'll never actually get built to that level. So, that's encouraging. One of the things I noticed on this first slide here on the graph of the ratios to the number of acres we're talking about there, that still takes into account that the work still has to be done to, to do the vacant land analysis with a fine-tooth comb. And so, I still have hope that those numbers can or may change, depending on the work that you're going to do with the vacant land analysis. Do I have that right?
In fact, they, they will change based on that.
Okay. Then, secondarily, when do you anticipate you, you're having the vacant land analysis done?
It's high priority, so...
Yeah. But will it be in advance of your... Yeah. But will it be in advance of your December 14th recommendation?
That's our plan.
Yeah. It's going to have-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going to have to be in order for me to even have that considered. So yes.
Mhm, mhm. Okay.
Maybe planning gets Thanksgiving off.
I also, I noticed that Mark's here, and has been for a number of these conversations.
I guess I have a two-point, or two-part question. One, to what level is public works involved in the level of conversation you're having about what's actually possible with some of these lands? And then, what manner of availability will public works be at that December 14th meeting, so that we can have a more thorough discussion? Because again, I'd hate to see us, I mean, I know how thoroughly you guys have been working on this, but I'd hate to see us create an inventory of lands like, you know, south on Bertleson there, where you, there's no infrastructure, and there's nothing in the CIP to ever build it there. So we know those lands will never be developed. So will we have that kind of robust discussion with this?
Absolutely. I mean, that's one of the things we're required to do, is to make sure that these areas can be served. And then to look at, you know, what's it going to cost, what's it going to take to serve these areas? So that is absolutely something we're going to be looking at. I can't speak to Mark's availability on the 14th, but I will say that we have been coordinating closely with his staff in wastewater. We've been talking with folks in storm water and in transportation as well, and then eWeb as well, about all of these areas outside the urban growth boundary.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Councilor Clark makes a really good point regarding the vacant land studies. Studies. All of the students will get more information regarding, you know, what else is available, including the 55, 45, or whatever recommendation, quote unquote, we're going to receive. You know, it's all preliminary based upon what we define down the road. So this is all pretty much early conversation that we're having, so until we have more information that's more specific. But I do have a couple of questions. Could you remind me again, you talked about West 11th and 18th. West 18th being transportation constrained. Can you remind me what that means?
I mean, right now, there are definitely some congestion issues on West 11th. And, you know, if you think about increasing the amount of residential density beyond what we're already assuming in those areas, it could make either of those streets even more congestion, and, you know, would be problematic at this point.
Okay. So that means, let's see if I'm translating that correctly, without more roads going down that avenue, we can't really build-
Well, it could be roads. It could also be us saying, you know, we would accept higher levels of congestion. So, but right now, based on how our plans are, these would kind of tip over beyond what we have set as acceptable levels.
I remember from a conversation some time ago, I was listening from that back corner over there, about what were the acceptable levels of congestion. I think on a high school grading scale, we're accepting a D. So if we're willing to accept more congestion than a D, that's not sounding very good. So I'm a little concerned about, you know, not being able to develop land that clearly is developable for residential use, simply because we don't have the right transportation infrastructure. I continue to be concerned about that. And I do have one other question regarding the state mandated, state mandated that we consider these pockets of land first. Maybe I missed this. Why is the state mandating these pockets, some of which aren't even contiguous?
Right. So they mandate that we first look at those lands that are kind of either adjacent or, you know, nearby to the urban growth boundary. They're residential, industrial or commercial, or basically non-resourced lands. And really, the point there is to preserve those farm and forest lands as our last consideration. So it's really in alignment with the whole Oregon statewide planning system of preserving farm and forest lands. So they want us to consider those absolutely last for expansion.
So they don't say, look at Crest Drive, look at Dillard. They say, use these criteria and screen for those criteria. Those are the eight areas that meet that.
Who identified the eight areas?
We, staff chose all of those that were adjacent to the urban growth boundary, as well as all of those that fall within the metro plan boundary.
So it's a staff recommended, state mandated?
Well, it's, no.
Emily, do you want to jump in?
You're filtering.
Just to be clear, that if the county has identified these lands as appropriate for residential, industrial, commercial development, they're zoned that way, and they've developed, for the most part, that way. So for the rural residentially-zoned land, many of them are five-acre parcels with houses on them already. Or there's industrial development that's allowed under the county's industrial zone. So by staff identifying these, they went to the county zoning to see what the county had already zoned them. So there's not a lot of judgment involved there. It's pretty formulaic.
So there is some judgment, that the judgment then goes back to when the zoning was made by the county.
Right. And what the-
It was a staff recommendation also.
Well, yeah, although there's not a lot of wiggle room from a legal standpoint on what staff's recommending to you, at least, like, as far as those areas are the ones we have to look at first. There may be problems with them, and we have some ways of prioritizing among them. But it's based on what the county's already zoned them, and that's what we get to work with.
Okay. So then, it is a state mandate, but it's not a mandate that was generated at the state level, or the identification of the lands were not generated by the state. It was generated lower.
Right, correct.
The state said, ah, you said that, so that-
Right. And so, you know, if appealed, for example, that's one of the things that the state will look at, to make sure that we first looked at all these lands. And to the extent we're not going on those lands, that we have justified why we're not.
Thank you. That's very clear.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that is very clear. Thank you.
I'm going to add in this conversation right now, about the new highway mobility standards that they're looking at. Give us more flexibility about what the road capacity that will be needed for that area. So the state is loosening up on the understanding that you may need to make some adjustments to be able to have a kind of dense living that we say we want to have.
And that could be helpful, especially on West 11th, which, at that far end, is a state facility. Yes, thank you.
George.
Thank you, Mayor. I've just got a couple of questions. Going back to the two zones that Councilor Zelenka was talking about, Dillard Road and Crest. And I suppose it could apply to almost any of these, this one aspect of it. But the Dillard Road area, you didn't seem to be too enthusiastic about. But I looked at it, and it seemed like there were hardly any wetland issues or steep, there were a few steep slopes. But there wasn't, there weren't a lot of farmland constraints. And I didn't see any, there may have been a tiny wetland area there. It seemed like the main constraint was Dillard Road handling extra traffic where that area to be developed to urban standards. That would be the constraint.
That's one of them. The other, that is absolutely one of them. The other two are actually providing wastewater and storm water to that site. So first, those lines would have to follow Dillard Road, which, if you've driven up there, kind of makes your car sick. And then, given the topography as well, those are actually probably two of the more problematic issues with that particular area.
And, well, okay, yeah. I've seen areas that are actually steeper than that, but developed in different spots around the country, particularly in the west. It's not impossible. It would probably be a lot more expensive, though, engineering, you know, right-ofways there. So, but I was just thinking, you know, so, but the traffic part of that constraint, it seems like almost any of these areas, that's going to apply to any of them, whether you're funneling out on River Road, or if you go onto Crest Drive, and you're going to come down Hilliard, or you're going to go over to Willamette, or you're going to go down Chambers from that area. And that area, actually, I think of all the ones you presented, is the most promising. But I meant through their lots, because our kid used to go to Crest School before they closed it. And so I am familiar with that. And there's lots of good, there are lots of good lots there. I mean, that could be developed easily. But, okay. But I think that's going to be, the traffic's going to be an issue, no matter what area we choose. We'll just have to deal with that, and make the streets wider, or build a new street, or something. I was just curious about, you mentioned some of those sites had, there were eWeb, eWeb had problems with providing service, just besides the metropolitan wastewater. But could you just expand on that a little bit?
Oh, you know, we've just had some preliminary conversations with them, and asked them to, you know, kind of evaluate each of these areas. And would it be difficult to serve, moderate to serve, or easy to serve? And it's really based on, you know, where their existing services are. It's based on topography. Is there, you know, could they put a looped system in, you know, because they don't, they don't like to build dead-end water mains, because of what happens to the water. So it was really based on those factors, and based on, you know, where they know the next, you know, pumps, or whatever they use, reservoirs, wrong, wrong system, where the next reservoirs were going to be built. And so it was really based on a number of factors there. And it is, I will say, it is preliminary information. And as we go forward, we'll get, you know, that information will be refined.
Okay. Well, I mean, these areas are being served by utilities, by some kind of utility now, at least electric. I don't know if they're all on wells.
Um, you know, it's mixed. Interestingly, the Crest Chambers, somewhere along the line, some of those properties have eWeb. I would say most of these areas are served by wells.
Because they're so close to the existing service, there's not a lot of-
Some of them have, you know, water districts as well, so.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for all this information. It's definitely food for thought. So I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, when we talk about the services that these different pieces of property will need to get services, I just think anything's possible with enough money. But we're trying to keep this property affordable for families. You know, we're talking about doing this with, there's single-family homes people can actually buy with the income that's earned in today's market. And so I appreciate that part of, you know, trying to weed those out that are going to be problematic with that. I mean, because that's really a concern for me. And I was hoping that you could talk a little bit about the lands also. You know, you were talking about the different lands, and which ones you can't use. Are there lands identified that are within our scope, that are industrial lands that would not be usable for these, for homes, or for schools, or for hospitals? I mean, at one point, I remember having a conversation with somebody about the train yard, when they were talking about just decommissioning it. And it's kind of a minor conversation about, you know, what that could and couldn't be used for. So are there other properties that are in this same area that are not usable because of that?
So there are two areas. I don't think we've analyzed them to that level. But the Aubrey area is a mixture of industrial and residential. So I think we, you know, we'd be hard-pressed to imagine some of that converting to residential. And I don't, you know, I don't know if those areas are contaminated, if that's what you're asking.
Just generally speaking.
Okay. And then some of the area, just north of Lane Community College, just along the highway there, some of that is industrial as well as commercial.
And so those wouldn't be used-
I think it'd be, yeah, I don't really imagine that we would see residential development going on there, that we would, if those are either of the areas that we'd be interested in, that those, we would recommend turning those to residential.
Well, I just want to say, while I have time, it may have only been two years that we've been talking about this. But I've been on council seven years, and it seems like we've always been talking about this. So, you know-
Land use.
Land use. I mean, it's part of what we do. So, thank you, guys.
Mike, do you want to finish up this conversation?
Thank you, Mayor, I will. Andrea makes a great transition here. We were supposed to be done with Envision Eugene stuff like two years ago, and we've been doing a very thorough job. And that's probably good. But one of the, one of the concerns that I have is, my understanding, I'm glad Rob's here, my understanding is that a recent NPC meeting talking about state funding for transportation issues, and how, I think we read in a paper today, that the state may have a great deal less money than they thought they did. And with transportation and gas tax collections being what they are and such, we may have some constraints on what sort of state dollars we'll see for transportation-related things in our area. And so, one of my chief concerns is if we're, I'm wondering about the linkage here with transplan update, and with everything else that's going on. I'm wondering about the linkage, if we're saying, we're going to bring in this area, but it requires a change in our planning for transportation facilities, for example. Are we either A, putting ourselves in position to need to wait to adopt this until we have a different plan in place with regard to transportation? Or B, are we putting ourselves in position to say, we'd like to bring these lands in, and here's how we'd like to update transplan to be able to serve and prove their capacity issues. But then we'll essentially be creating plans that we know, based on the state's lack of funding, can never actually be built, and again, be creating phantom acres. So can you talk about that interplay a little bit?
Alyssa or Emily?
So we are coordinating with the transportation system plan update. And as you alluded to, there may be, I mean, it kind of depends which of these finishes first. It would be hopeful that they would be adopted, you know, along, about the same time. If that doesn't occur, we would probably make amendments to transplan in the interim, to hold us over with those new, you know, whatever the new projects were, or the new level of services within that plan. But then that would need to be incorporated into the Eugene Transportation System Plan.
Now, for example, when we showed the numbers, that showed the acres, and, you know, we went through that formula, one of those was transportation constrained. And the numbers that you see don't assume any capacity on those transportation constrained numbers. So what that means is, is that, and I don't remember the exact number, it means that there's more acres required that we don't currently have inside the UGB because of that transportation constraint. In other words, we haven't assumed that there's, that that transportation infrastructure is in place on those acres. So we haven't taken credit for that capacity.
Right. So do we have a legal requirement, then, to have a transportation plan to service those areas that can be funded, or that we have some reliable understanding can be funded within the 20-year window? Do we have any requirement, or are we building phantom plans that'll never actually take place on land, that'll never get developed?
Can we call this attorney?
We do. I mean, transportation is, you can consider it, their rules are written differently. But you can consider it like you would any other public facility. And we have to show that we feasibly expect these lands to develop in the next 20 years. And that means that there needs to be some planning. If there's, if they're constrained, because they can't be served by wastewater, or they can't be served by transportation facilities, we have an obligation to have in our plans how we're going to solve that problem in 20 years.
And the obligation is to say specifically that we know what needs to be built, or how we're going to actually get it built?
I don't, I'm not quite sure what, with respect to transportation, what is required. Like, they don't get specifically to the point where it has to be on the CIP, for example, with respect to other projects.
That's really kind of what I'm pushing towards.
But transportation planning may be a little bit different. It's treated differently. So we, I can get you more specifics about that. And it may be that other facilities are treated differently than one another, as far as we can look at that.
Again, my concern is just that we create a plan, and we modify our transportation planning, but that we actually can't afford to do any of that in the next 20 years, so it never actually takes place. I would want us to be sensitive to creating those, those new lands for development, where they can actually be developed in the 20-year window.
And notwithstanding any legal requirements, our intent would be is to present a plan that is realistic, in the sense that it can actually be achieved within the 20 years. So that's what our, that's what our intent is.
Right.
And notwithstanding the legal nuances of that. And so whatever that constraint area may not be, we want to make sure we've accounted for that. And if, in fact, you can't develop a piece of property in 20 years, then we shouldn't count that towards being able to be developed, and vice versa. So that's what our intent will be. Again, notwithstanding the legal nuances of that.
Excellent segue to my last question. Pillar seven, flexibility in the five-year window, or the 10-year window, or the whatever. I haven't heard a lot of conversation around that, and what that structure looks like with regard to this, and our reanalysis through time.
Well, we're just starting to do some more work on that. I mean, we plan, as part of the proposal that's going to come forward as the city manager's recommendation, we'll be including pillar seven as part of that, because it really is about the monitoring and revisiting. And so that's not fully fleshed out, but it will be before you get to an adoption package.
And we're getting some real good guidance from the Technical Resource Group on that. We have a running list of data needs that we'll be collecting.
Okay. So that structure will be in place by the 14th, or by mid-FEB?
Um, not by the 14th. Certainly, I think by the time we get-
We'll have a proposal for it.
What's that?
We'll have a proposal.
Have a proposal for it, yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
So I was just saying, and one way to think about this is, in Springfield, they have got some money, or they're working on their transit plan to go up to McVeigh. We're at the same time looking at whether there's property up by McVeigh that might be good for a single-family dwelling. And so there may be some nexus between plans that are going on, meeting transportation needs, that will at the same time meet our housing needs. Those are all sort of out there, but they're beginning to journey because of this. It's within Springfield's expectations, that they hope to see a transit line between- within Springfield's expectations that they hope to see a transit line between downtown and LCC, using McVeigh, right? Okay, so we're going to move on to our other topic. Thank you all.
Thanks very much.
Out of our housing and going on our bus.
I went on a bike ride. I had some poor soul have to pedal me around because I don't have a bike.
So we have a discussion now about the bike and bus plan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to Rob to introduce the topic, and then I think Reed will actually make the presentation.
Thank you. I'm going to introduce Reed Barr, who recently joined us in September. He moved here from Madison, Wisconsin. And he started, he's our associate pedestrian and bicycle planner. So Reed's going to, gone up to speed pretty quickly, and he's going to give you an update on terms of where we're at with pedestrian and bicycle master plan and what the next steps are.
Indeed, I will. Can we see the presentation? Okay, good. Last time we were here talking about the plan, do I need the microphone? Last time we were here talking about the plan, it was in July. And at that meeting, we covered the background and the process that we were going to undergo to get to what we've arrived at now, which is the draft pedestrian and bicycle plan. So today, I want to talk about the results of that and what our recommendations are. And we're going to focus on a number of capital projects that are included in this draft plan. So specifically, I'm going to talk about the process and what we've done to get to this point, just to refresh your memory and to talk about what we've done. Then I'm going to talk about the plan content, and within that, I'm going to really delve into some of the projects, what sorts of things are we recommending that is going to help us achieve our goal for this plan. And then I'll finish with the next steps. The process began about almost a year and a half, about 18 months ago. And this plan is funded through a grant from ODOT. So I think that's, it's pretty fortuitous. The plan was generated based on extensive public involvement. And that means we've had online mapping tools where we've collected over 600 responses. We've had two open houses before July, field reviews. We actually did an immersion technique with the consultants who went out and rode everything in the community. And so really was an exhaustive process that led to basically an existing conditions report that allowed us to develop some very specific recommendations as to what needed to happen with the pedestrian system and with the bicycle transportation system. In July, Rob was here, and he talked about the results of that. And that brings us to now. Since then, we've put the plan together, generated that draft plan that was part of your packets. And we've also started to collect public comment on that. So what does the public think about that? After that extensive public engagement process, how did we do? To get, to get to that answer, we developed an online survey, had a number of responses to that. We had another open house in September, and we've been collecting written comments via email, and also been collecting a lot of phone calls from people who had some very specific comments. And the results of those are included also in your packets as attachments A and B. So I tried to distill that as best I could, but basically, here's the, here's the distillation of those comments. This is a good step. Many people thought that this is a necessary plan to help improve the safety and mobility for all transportation users within the city. It will also help to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, and also to reduce traffic congestion. So as we're looking at transportation as a system, this is a vital component to achieving the sorts of things that we say we'd like to achieve in other documents, like the Climate and Energy Action Plan and Within 20-Minute Neighborhoods. We shouldn't be afraid to try new things. Part of what I'm going to talk about today is that, it talks about some things that we don't really have yet, some new facilities that a lot of communities are utilizing to help achieve their goals of greater mode share for walking and biking. So we need to be able to explore those and apply them where appropriate. Change requires time. The timeframe of this plan is 20-plus years. And so we're looking at some of this occurring over time. There's a lot of projects in here. We can't do them all at once. And so we need to be very deliberate about where we apply our funding and how we go after these different projects. New facilities will also take time to be understood. And so we need to embrace that change is difficult, and there might be some resistance to that. And then lastly, many respondents felt that funding will limit implementation. And we talked a little bit about that during the previous session. Was that, and I think the comments that were most striking were people who gave examples of cities that achieved greater mode share through investment. It's about leaving a legacy infrastructure system that ties together the mobility needs of all residents and all users. And eventually, we really need to look at pedestrian, the pedestrian system as kind of the base for that, and how everything ties together through that. And this plan does, I think, a good job of marrying all of that together, so that we're concentrating specifically on the non-motorized network, but making it a viable transportation option for people who do have other choices. And so that all brings us about to this point here, where we're talking again at a work session in November. What we would like to do, based on the comments that we've been collecting, and based on the comments that we received tonight, is to put together a final draft, and then come back for council to accept the plan in early 2012. So over the next couple of months, we'll be generating that final plan, and then come back to you in early 2012 to talk specifically about, about what we've done. And then the plan itself will be adopted as part of the Transportation System Plan Update, hopefully in 2013. Excuse me. The goal of this plan, and there's one overarching goal, is that we're, we're trying to double the percentage of walking and biking trips over the next 20 years. And it sounds pretty ambitious, but a lot of communities that have a gold-level community as designated by the League of American Bicycleists are looking at about the same measure of percentage, somewhere around the 20% of biking. And when you add in peds, we're talking between 20 and 40% of trips. So it's really significant, but it's something we think that is also very achievable. And in order to do that, we developed some objectives to help us get there. So one of them that I liked, again, marrying the land use planning process that we're currently undergoing with the transportation process, is that by creating 20-minute neighborhoods, we'll increase the likelihood that we will be able to walk and bike, and that we'll reach that mode share. So when we get to the policy level, if we're trying to create or double our percentage of pedestrian trips, and we're trying to create 20-minute neighborhoods, then a policy of that would be to provide a continuous sidewalk network, because communities that have, that are good for walking have a continuous and complete sidewalk network. So that's what we're really looking to achieve there. And then to kind of evaluate our progress, we're also looking at performance measures so that we know when, when we've arrived, and we know what we need to be working on as part of the process. So to achieve that doubling of trips, we really need to be thoughtful about how we implement our transportation improvements. So one of the things that we developed as part of the process is what we're calling the Best Practices Guide. And what that does is it talks about a number of different design treatments that can be used to enhance safety and to increase mobility for people with mobility disabilities, for people who have concerns about riding with traffic, and just make it a safer and more attractive environment for people who want to ride and to bike more. So over the next few slides, I'm going to talk about some of the facilities that are common in Eugene, and that we need to develop more of, because it's necessary to achieve that, that overall goal. The first of which is sidewalks, which is our primary pedestrian facility. The plan identifies about 40 additional miles of sidewalks, so it would be necessary to complete all the gaps that exist within the current network. And again, we've gone through an extensive process using our GIS and the existing data that we have, and then through the public engagement process, identified some additional gaps of places we didn't know existed. But we have all identified and put into these, these tables. So the way that the plan works is we have a map for each of the facility types. So we have pedestrian maps, and there's like six of those, and we also have biking maps. And within that, we've identified specific segments, and we've also have a table that, if you link the project ID number, explains exactly what the length is of that segment, and what we envision as part of that improvement. Again, sidewalks are our primary pedestrian facility. And what we're really trying to identify are gaps in the network. So given that example, you can see there's a little bit of sidewalk right here, but nothing on the ends of that. And so to fill in those gaps is necessary to actually enable pedestrian mobility or true mobility within that neighborhood. And so a lot of our projects focus on making sure that we have a complete network and a connected network. Another facility that we have, and we have very good ones, our Shared Youth Pass. And our Shared Youth Pass system is very popular. A lot of people use that system. And accessways are part of that, too. The areas that connect our existing network together, and sometimes it's an alley that goes through a neighborhood and connects some streets together, and sometimes it's an actual shared youth path facility that will connect, in this case, River Road through Razor Park over to the, to the West Bank Pass system. And in this particular example that I mentioned there, we did get, what's the name of the grant?
A State Urban Trails Grant.
State Urban Trails Grant, and this will be built next year. So we're already implementing this plan, or looking at the recommendations of this plan as we move forward. We're also looking at completing new segments. One of the values of the Shared Youth Pass system is that it's used by everybody. You'll see families out there, you'll see people walking their dogs, you'll see people, you know, throughout their stages of life in the community using that facility, because it feels very comfortable, it's very familiar. They feel comfortable there. And so a lot of people use it as the backbone for the non-motorized transportation system, and that's great. But some places don't have that to create the backbone. So here's an example, where we're looking at developing a new segment, Justin Path, which would basically connect, you know, Golden Gardens Park up on the north end here, over to the Beltline Path.
That is popularly called the lumpy bumps.
The lumpy bumps, okay. Should we, okay, man, we can talk about that later. And then eventually down to the Fernridge Trail. So what you have there is you have a really nice, convenient way to get over to the areas to the east. And it'll provide access, as well as recreational opportunities, to all these great park facilities. So it's almost a string and pools approach, where we've identified where our pools are, and we're trying to provide an adequate system for people to get there comfortably and conveniently. Another facility that is very common in Eugene are bike lanes. And just like the off-road system really accommodates a lot of people, the bike lane system does the same thing. Although this is attracting a different user, generally speaking. Some people are simply never comfortable operating on bike lanes. And so we need to look at improvements like Shared Youth Pass and some other things I'm going to talk about over the next few slides, to make sure that we're attracting the greatest number of users and actually working toward achieving that objective of doubling our mode share. So I think what I want to say here is that this facility is effective because it delineates the space where the bicycles should operate as separate from where the automobiles should operate. And some of the examples we have here include segments where there should be some sort of bike facility. The example here is Polk Street, and a lot of bicyclists are using this right now. And this is a, this is a collector. And so the facility type that we would recommend here would be a bike lane. And what this would do is it would close the gap between the northern and southern segment, which will get you down to the Fernridge Trail down here. So again, another connection that, that makes a lot of sense. Here's what I'm talking about, when I'm saying some people aren't comfortable. Many of the projects establish important linkages. Portland developed this, I guess, this, this image to demonstrate that there's basically four transportation cyclists, or four types of transportation cyclists. And what we're doing now in a lot of our systems is we're attracting the strong and fearless riders who will ride on anything, and we're attracting the enthused and confident riders who need a bike lane or some other facility to feel comfortable. But we're not doing enough to address the interested but concerned. And if we're being realistic about doubling our percentage, we need to draw from the 60%. These are the people who would like to go out and ride, but they're expecting a level of comfort that is significantly similar to what they experience on a shared youth path. And we can't build those everywhere. So what can we do on-street to make that sensation very similar to riding off-street in a separated facility? There's an additional 33% over here that we don't really worry about, because we're not going to reach them. They're going to drive no matter what. Sometimes they have a mobility limitation where they need to do that. Sometimes it's just more convenient. Sometimes they live too far away. And so really, what we're trying to do is we're concentrating on this 60%. And I mention that because some of the new stuff that the plan recommends, that we've already started to implement and is new to Eugene, are things like cycle tracks and buffered bike lanes. This is the example that's on Alder right now, and this is what we would refer to as a buffered bike lane. You've got a two-way bike lane here that enables directions in two ways. You've got a buffer strip here through paint that delineates a little bit of space between, in this example, a row of on-street parking and a travel lane over here. So people operating on this path here, it functions like a path, on this bike lane have the user experience of a shared youth path, but it's using the infrastructure of a bike lane. And it's, and it's installed on an existing roadway. And this is going to be necessary for successful in attracting families and that 60% of concerned users. And the people who we encounter as we ride this and talk with other people who like this facility are saying, well, this is great. If I had this where I lived, I'd use this all the time. Okay, great. And that's why we've identified those projects, because that's what it's going to take to get over that hump and to, to draw people from that additional 60%. Here's an example of, of what we're talking about. This is High Street. This is the Riverbank Pass system. Here's the Amazon Pass system. What we're hearing a lot, and we got a lot of comments on this, is that people that live down here, with families who want to recreate up here, and, you know, enjoy this wonderful recreation facility and the parks that are up here, there's a missing link for them. And it's, and it's called High Street. And if they could replicate, if we were successful in replicating the sensation of this shared youth pass system on this end, and on this end, through this street, which currently has bike lanes, then we would increase mobility for them, and they'd have access between these, these parks and these different uses throughout. So, and this is a facility and, and a process that I think is, is important and valuable, and something that we need to embrace as part of implementation of this plan. This facility, I think, is one where we would actually want to introduce some kind of separation, physical separation, between that bike lane and the travel lane. And I have a couple of examples of what that might look like. And again, this is going to happen on a case-by-case basis, and it might be all of these or none of these. On this one, what you see is very similar to what we have on Alder Street, except they've actually developed a curb there. So there's a little bit of a, of a bump there that would prevent movement between the vehicle travel lane and the bicycle lane. In this example, there's actually a grade separation. And so the roadway is actually lower than what the cycle track facility would be, which is also separated from the sidewalk facility. Also, again, it's, a lot of these look similar. They replicate, again, the user experience of the off-road facility, but put that on-street. This is in Portland. It's on Northeast 33rd, I think, or something like that. And then lastly, basically, what we've done on Alder would be a treatment like this, which is two-way, some on-street parking. This buffer lane actually allows for the doors to open, so that people don't get knocked off their bikes here. But what this one also introduces is a bollard, which would prevent motor vehicles from then parking into the curb and ignoring all of our paint over here, which is something we've been experiencing a little bit with our new installation. Another example of ways to attract the 60%. The previous example I gave, we're actually still putting those facilities on a lot of the collectors and arterials that currently have bike lanes, and we're saying, okay, we're going to provide a physical separation. Another thing that we can do is we can look on, on streets that are, that have lower volume, lower speed traffic. And that can provide the same level of comfort for a lot of users that, say, a shared youth path would, or a cycle track would, simply because there aren't as many cars operating there, and the volume of cars or frequency that they would experience cars is much, much lower. And there's some treatments that we can do as part of that. The plan identifies essentially five different intensities of what would constitute a bike boulevard. On one end, we have signage alone, because we have some streets that operate very well, and they're already a bicycle boulevard, we just haven't called them that. 15th is an example of that, where we have a lot of traffic calming. There's a lot of bikes that operate there, and the cars are few. So it's very comfortable for people to operate there. What we would like to do, as a minimum treatment on bicycle boulevards, is introduce a shared lane marking, and you've seen these pop up around town, which indicates to motor vehicles where bikes should be operating, and communicates to bikes where they should be operating, so that they can be clear of the doors on, and so that they can position themselves properly within the travel lane. And play that with some kind of, of signage, too. Not necessarily wayfinding, that is destination-based, but some kind of sign that lets you know that you're still on the right course, you're still going to get at one end either to a shared youth path or to a bike lane, so that you can continue your journey. On the other end of this, we would also introduce things like pedestrian refuge islands or other pedestrian treatments. There would also be some traffic calming introduced, again, to slow traffic and make it more comfortable for bicycles to operate within that street. And there's about 60 miles of these recommended as part of the plan. So this is going to be a pretty major component of what we're talking about. And it's, it's, it's less intensive than, say, a bike lane, especially when we're talking about the level of facility development, which is the installation of a shero, which can be a little bit less expensive to install. expensive to install. The plan also talks about intersection improvements, and it mentions 42 specifically. And these will be improvements that we look at on a case-by-case basis as a project comes up. They were identified through the public process, through that online mapping tool is an example. Here's one where we go from, and this is an example, using the East Bank Path where it terminates at the Delta Highway. And then for people who would like to continue eastbound, they're going from that shared use path experience to a bike lane, and they're asked to make a two-stage crossing across the Delta Highway and then across Green Acres to do that. And from what I've observed, having stood there, is that a lot of people will continue down the sidewalk and travel the wrong way, and then at some point they'll choose to cross mid-block or at one of the driveway entrances to these commercial developments in a place where motorists wouldn't expect to see them along Green Acres. So, this is an example where we think there needs to be an improvement made. What that is exactly, we're not entirely sure yet, but we're going to be looking at that and evaluating that as part of a pavement preservation project that begins next year. Similarly, there are projects that require more analysis than we could give it during a citywide evaluation, and so we've identified some feasibility study projects. And there's 10 of those recommended as part of the plan. As an example, the Amazon Park Crossing Study is something that came up in the public involvement process quite a bit. If you live on this side of the park or on this side of the park and you need to get to the other side, you basically have to drop down to 29th Street to get across. And so, we don't, we know there's a lot of environmental challenges to doing something here, and we don't know exactly what needs to be done. So, that requires more study, and it requires us to work with the neighborhood there to figure out what the best solution is. So, that would require a study on its own. So, in terms of next steps, staff is currently evaluating all of those comments that we received, written by email through phone calls from that last online survey that we had and from that last open house. And we're actually going down them project by project and making some tweaks to them. And based on that and the comments that we received from you tonight, we'll be able to assemble what I think would be our final plan. And then what we would like to do is come back for council to accept that plan in early 2012, so somewhere around February to do that. And the plan itself will ultimately be adopted as part of the TSP update in 2013. And for more information, we have everything that's been generated as part of the plan development process posted at eugene.pedbikeplan.org, including that best practices guide that I mentioned is on there. This draft plan is on there, and all of the maps and other exhibits that were generated as part of the planning process are available there as well. So, that concludes the formal presentation. If you have any questions, Rob and I'll do our best to handle it.
Presentation.
Thanks.
Andrea and Pat, in Q. I just want to make a couple of comments, and that is, one is that I'm concerned about how, that we talk about how we're going to keep things in good repair at the same time as we talk about how we're going to be adding to, so how we bring that conversation together, but to offer the same thing. And I wanted to say, make a applause for Sunday Streets. In terms of more of those, because many people really do like getting out on those streets when everybody else.
In case we haven't made it clear, we have another plan called the Pedestrian and Bicycle Strategic Plan that was adopted administratively that addresses kind of all the other things that we do to encourage more walking and biking, to encourage that it be safe, and that we educate people about it, and we cover enforcement and other sort of non-infrastructure issues like that.
So, to me, I guess when we talk about it, sort of tying those things together for people makes sense to me. And then what I really appreciate, because we've been through a lot of conversations for a long time, is being clear about our intentionality. You know, we hear from people who say, "How could you have ever thought about fixing this street without doing X, Y, and Z to it?" So, clarity on our intentionality seems to be really important. We know what we plan to do with things. May not be able to do them as quickly as we'd like to, or as we'd like, but that's the direction we're going. I've got Andrea, Andrea and then Pat.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff. I appreciate the presentation, and I actually got to go out on a bike ride through the Whittaker. It was a lot of fun, got to spend some, a nice brisk morning with some folks. And I just want to say that on that spectrum that you had there of the people that are the hardcore riders to the 60% you're trying to address.
Interested but concerned.
I'm part of the 33%, you know. I know that I will not, in my lifetime at this point, probably become an avid bike rider and be out there braving the cold. I give a lot of respect to the people that I know that are, you know, committed to bike riding regardless of the weather, and that's just totally awesome. So, a couple of comments that I want to make. I'll save my last one, my, I'll save a comment for the end. But I'm just kind of concerned about, when we talk about sidewalks in areas, you know, you showed a picture on, in Pat's Ward, I think it was, on Danabo, that had a strip of sidewalk and then, and then no sidewalks on the other side. It's my understanding that we expect the people who own the property to pay for that. And I would hope that before you start any of those conversations, that you actually have a conversation with the community. I would not support an LID for an area that did not want to pay for it. And in our area and in areas that have unimproved streets, it would be a hard push to ask people to put in curbs and sidewalks, you know, when they're barely making it. So, I have a question about the Razor Park bike path, so I'm assuming that we got neighborhood buy-in on that?
That path is in the Razor Park Master Plan, which my understanding had a lot of community involvement.
Okay, good. Glad to hear it, because this is, you know, I guess I haven't been paying very close attention. This is the first I've heard of it, and I, and sometimes I just didn't want to get sidetracked. So, my last comment would be about Highway 99. You know, it's really concerning to me, you know, I know that some people who are avid bike riders, you know, weather the storm and do whatever they have to, but, and I'm not going to assume it's a choice that they can actually afford a car, because a lot of people have chosen to give up cars in order to ride bikes, and that's their lifestyle choice. But when I think about the sidewalks on Highway 99, I see a page and two, almost three pages of sidewalks. And, you know, when I think about the priorities for me in my community, when I think about safety, and I know it's not safe, I mean, they just finished repaving Highway 99, props to ODOT, thank you, Sonny, Sonny Chikarin, it's a fabulous road, so smooth, and it's all marked well. But it still doesn't have sidewalks, and it's a lot better than it was, but, you know, if we want to encourage people to be safe, and I'm talking about people who don't have choices. A lot of people walk up and down that highway, and it just really, it bothers me that it's stuck in here. I mean, I would like to see it bumped up. I know we've applied for a couple of grants in the past for it, but, you know, I just, if I could, hush.
We just partnered with ODOT on a grant application for their flexible federal funding program for hybrid sidewalks on one side of Highway 99, so keep your fingers crossed on that.
Thank you.
Oh, we're in the Council of Ordees. Thank you. The problem with that is that the people who use that really have no other choices. And we're looking at the people in South Eugene who go down High Street to access the roadside amenities are having several choices to get there, whereas the folks that Council of Ordees is talking about, we don't have a choice.
That's true.
That is it. But however, last time we spoke, Rob, you pointed out some facilities with a plan that really will begin to help that, for instance, the overpass over the Southern Pacific Lines or the railway lines. Eventually, the overpass over at Avalon, over the Beltline Road, maybe don't know where to go. This is one of the times that we see a plan that we don't really have a final picture of what it's going to look like, but because we have an idea of what we would like to have, we can move forward with it. Sometimes we see plans, we saw one of those plans earlier on this evening in the presentation, but sometimes we don't know exactly where we're going. But I really want to commend you, I have nothing but the highest knowledge on everything that you said today. And I hear that you come from a pretty good talent for bicycles, and that is in the discussion. I've heard good things about that. So, but very, very good, really gives me a lot of enthusiasm for the future of Eugene and the bicycle system of Eugene. One thing I'd mention, Rob, and since you and I have talked about, is a partnership of OTD and bicycles, making it easier for people to use bicycles at the end of their trip, which would maybe involve, you know, garages downtown for bicycles, that people can take a bus downtown to where they work and then have a bicycle waiting for them so they can use for a destination downtown. They may live out in, oh, let's say, Bethel.
All the way up.
And, you know, take a bus downtown and have a bicycle, their own bicycles waiting. And you and I have talked about that, and I know that you're thinking at least somewhat about it.
Well, and there's a point-to-point solutions at LTB that received funding, I think it was also STPU funds for a bike parking study that will include the downtown and AMX system. And then also, it's not part of any plan yet, but we've had some conversations about the idea of bike sharing, where there's cities around the country that have embraced this idea where you have actually bikes that you would rent. And if you remember, the first half hour was typically free. So, it's a really great way to combine transit with biking and not have to have your own bike waiting there, a bike that anyone can use who signed up for that program.
I think, you know, we're talking about the 60% and identifying, why is it that the 60% aren't utilizing the bike system more? And a lot of times it's just identifying something, one little thing, is, you know, like, "Why aren't you buying my cordless drills?" You identify one little thing, that that's the one reason. And if, for instance, if I had a bicycle downtown, if I didn't have to put one in the back of my car or risk maybe there's going to be a space on the bus to put one, then having one downtown, just taking the bus, would really encourage me personally to use the bike system more. And it sounds like you guys are way on top of that, so excellent. I'm really pleased with what I see here. Thank you.
Hey, Betty.
I think it looks great, and I probably will accept it enthusiastically. I do think we need more bike paths that are separated from the road, totally. I used to ride to Coburg, Harrisburg, Peoria, and now to get, if, once you get up past Harrisburg, it's not hard, but it's gotten much more dangerous to ride along the streets in town in the last 20 years or so. And I think you feel cars and buses touching you almost, you don't want to go out there. I think about this, well, oh, I wanted to mention George and I both, George Brown and I, we're both just at National League of Cities, and we both attended one of the, the same workshop once, mobile workshop. In Tempe, Arizona, I don't know if you're familiar with this, but they have what they call a bike seller, C-E-L-L-A-R. And it's a place for parking bikes. They can take 112 bikes to park for the day for $12 a day. They also have, if people want to join a club and join the thing, they have four showers there. And they also have bikes for rent, so it's just everything you need to be a bicyclist. And they even, I ask what happens if they run out, if they get more than 112 bikes, will they just move out some of the ones that are for sale or rent and put them in? They won't turn anybody away. And it does connect with their light rail and their buses and their future street cars. And it's really a great thing, I think. So, I hope you'll look at that. About the sidewalks, are we going to, are you going to start, is the plan to start methodically, asking every neighborhood, "Do you want sidewalks?"
So, it sounds like you're asking, well, we have all these sidewalks identified, but what's the strategy for implementation? And as Councilor Ordees pointed out in the past, the city did have a sidewalk infill program, and those sidewalks were built through assessments to property owners, or the property owners were required to build a sidewalk, they had a choice. And so, we haven't determined yet what the right strategy is. We've listed some different approaches that could be used. In some cases, it could be applying for grants if it's, say, near a school, and there is a safety school grant program that we could apply for. In some cases, they could be built as part of other projects. So, for example, in West 11th, there's, if the MX project moves forward, there's a sidewalk that would get built in West 11th where there's currently gaps even near Bus 4 on Highway 99, too, on grants. But, you know, I think there's a lot of sidewalks on more residential streets, let's say, that probably wouldn't really compete for any grant program and where the city would have to come up with a funding mechanism to pay for that. So, that's something that we'll have to have a conversation about at some point.
That is difficult, but on Potter Street, near where I live, there's no, there are no sidewalks on either side for part of it. And I see children walking along there all the time. It's not, it's not really, and some of them riding bikes, and it isn't really safe for either one. I have one more comment. I don't know why the people in South Eugene don't need ways to get through. I have more choices, I didn't understand that. But I think, Pat's going to speak next, so maybe he can tell us about South Eugene, which is where I live. Thank you.
We have Mike and Alan report, Pat.
Oh, okay.
I'll let Pat do the South Eugene thing, too. I won't bother with that. Good work, good job. I appreciate the work very much. This is a very important part of the livability of our community is to have a robust plan like this. I especially, as somebody who lives very nearby to it, appreciate your including the Green Acres Delta interchange piece there, because I've ridden my bike with my kids on that particular place many, many times, and it's very much a safety issue. To touch on what both Andrea and I believe Rob was saying here and Pat, page 34 talks about local funding sources. There's a whole lot of thick red lines here, especially in West Eugene, and a lot of them in North and in River Road, Santa Clara area, that all predominantly, the predominance of them look to be in neighborhood areas and in residential streets. I have a real concern with us looking at this where a lot of different funding options, CDVG and so forth, are all looking at maintenance issues and other things, but when it comes to a good, solid plan for funding this stuff, other than creating LIDs, I think we need a lot more work there, because I'd like to see it come to pass, but I, if we're going to create a series of LIDs in order to get this done, I think we're dooming this one to failure. I have some real concerns about that. We'll just have a series of small fights about this thing all over the place, and I don't think that's going to serve anybody. The other piece is, I've asked a couple of times about this, because it's kind of in the news lately. If you look at page 18, you've got, and I want to understand this, the nature of this is a plan that's not, you know, a lot of this stuff isn't listed in a CIP somewhere, it's not on a multi-year infrastructure plan, but I see us having a proposed sidewalk infill along County Farm Road, right there. So, I'm wondering if you can tell me, because I was told it's not in the CIP, that's not to be built, what's the timeframe that we're looking at for this? Because as you look up and down that road, there are proposals for a series of at least, we're going to see 101, 162, so something near 300 new dwelling units along that road whose only access is out onto County Farm to walk down to Coburg where there's no sidewalk and there's a lot of gravel trucks. And I think that's going to become a very large safety issue there. So, I'm wondering, tell me about when that sidewalk gets built and under what conditions, because there aren't adjoining properties to create an LID that I'm aware of.
So, County Farm Road is listed in transplan as an urban standards project. It's not in the current six-year CIP. We'll have a process to develop the next six-year CIP next fall, so around a year from now. So, I imagine that as part of that process, that there'll be an opportunity for County Farm Road to be put on the...
Forgive me, does that have it following this six-year window? So, it's, in other words, it's at least six years before that would get built, or it can be inserted in that?
We do it, we, it's, only two years are funded, so it'll be an update. So, we do a new CIP every two years. So, it's kind of a, we overlap four of the years at a time.
Right. And so, we're doing it next year?
That's right.
So, it's likely a year or perhaps three before that sidewalk probably ever goes in?
We've had some conversations with the Affordable Housing Program with the city about how can we get a connection just, that would serve the proposed basketball village development? And a couple of things we've looked at is a path across some undeveloped property to connect to Matt Drive or to build a sidewalk connection from where the sidewalk currently ends on Coburg Road. So, we're looking at what some options are and how we could potentially pay for that. That's different than doing an urban standards project along County Farm Road.
Okay. Thanks, Rob.
Okay, Alan?
This is a great plan, you guys. Really, it's well organized, it's clear, and you really get a sense of the scope of all the things that we could possibly do. We have one of the best bike paths and bike systems in the country. I think we're just named as, what, the fifth-best bike city in the nation, and this would just add on to that and prove it, which is also why we beat Portland in terms of people who ride bikes as a mode of transportation to work every day, which is always a source of pride for me, anyway. My favorite picture in here is on page 28, the Mossback Volk Sport Club, walking on the path. That's just a great photo. The, you know, what this all, to me, is about is increasing livability and increasing choice and increasing mobility. And as Councilor Wiley always says from Springfield, in order for transportation systems to work, they need to be convenient. And for them to be convenient, you need the infrastructure. And for them to be convenient, you need the infrastructure. So if you don't have the infrastructure about bike paths and different things and the sidewalks, people are not going to use that mode of transportation. So this is really about the infrastructure, we need to make that more appealing, and get at that 60 percent, minus Andrea. And...
No, I'm part of the 33.
Yeah, right, minus Andrea.
She's in that 1 percent over on the farm.
I'm 33.
Part of the 33.
Part of the 33.
No, no way, no how.
Yeah. And then there's the 1 percent, it's no way under my dead body, that's 32 percent. So what kind of dedicated, I mean, there's a list of all these potential funding sources, but are dedicated funding sources right now are, I know we have, what, 5 percent of the road bonds was dedicated to bike and pet paths. Other than that, what dedicated sources do we have to implement these things?
Well, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say there's any dedicated sources. One thing we're looking at is taking the traffic calming fund and making it somewhat more flexible to help with pedestrian and bicycle projects partnering with neighborhoods, but that's a pretty small amount of funding, it's $30,000 a year.
Yeah, pretty much.
So, yeah, and now we'd be targeting to local streets. We use a, you know, a considerable amount of our system development charges go to enhancing the pedestrian and bicycle system, and in many cases, that uses a local match for grants that we apply for. A lot of the, you know, a lot of the funding we get is through grants, and that, and, you know, it's challenging. One of the challenges is that we have to put, we don't necessarily put the project forward that's the most needed, we put the project forward that we think has the best chance of getting funded, but that's also somewhat of a high priority, so that they don't always line up with each other. And we have to match with the grant program that's available. So for example, we almost didn't do the application, it was really ODOT that took the lead on it for Highway 99, because it's like a $3 million project, and the grant program is only providing 2.1 million. And ODOT actually is putting a lot of their own money up as match, but it's really trying to find out kind of that sweet spot with the grants. But I think that there isn't necessarily a dedicated funding stream for implementing pedestrian bicycle projects or...
Other than the bond money, but that's actually going towards preservation.
That's right. I mean, that conversation we could have is for the next round, should we take a similar amount, but use some of it to make enhancements along the quarters that we're looking at?
What are we averaging per year in grants?
I think we estimate it around, maybe like a million and a half, would you say?
And then also, part of our, the money that we're, that we dedicate towards this is part of the, when a road gets reconstructed or a road gets built, we put in bicycle lanes and things like that. That's not actually a dedicated fund, but it's part of the funds we allocate towards roads.
Yeah, so roads get, when roads get built, it's usually either by what we call privately engineered public improvement, where developers installing it, or it's an urban standards project, where it's a combination of assessments and system development charges that are paying for it. And then in some cases, we've used grant funds or STPU funds, like for the courthouse transportation improvements.
Right, because, so that makes it kind of hard to see those funds, because they're all mixed up inside with the other street preservation funds and all of those kind of projects, so we don't really extract them out. So it looks like we're spending a lot less than we actually are. So I was trying to look through here and find if there was a total for all of the projects. Do you have a, can you get that?
It's one of the recommendations we've had, and that we were going to, and actually the cost for the tables right now, too, we're having our transportation engineers look into the cost, because some of them are high, actually, most of them are high. And so they're going back through them again, taking a closer look at them, and then we'll be able to update the table with a total for each category, so we would know sidewalks total, and we would know bike lanes total.
So each table will have its own total?
Yeah.
And then there'll be a total, a summary total with all the categories, plus the top, total of everything, okay. Got a guess?
What it is right now is somewhere on the order of like 93 million.
93 million?
And I think over 50 million of that is sidewalks. So, you know, one of the complaints we've had is that this is so bike-heavy, you know, it's all bike projects, but it's because the project types for bikes are much more diverse than they are for pedestrian projects. Pedestrian projects, it's sidewalks and it's shared use paths, and it might be a great separated crossing, but for bikes, we can do lanes, or we can do boulevards, or we can do cycle tracks, or we can do buffered bike lanes, or, there's just so much more. So it fills more pages that way. But cost-wise, the pedestrian projects, at least in the current breakdown, takes up a larger share.
So 93 million, and we spent about $600,000 from a year on the funds from the bonds, plus maybe a million and a half, so it'll take us about 75 years?
Well, so it's a 20-year plan, but there's a, there are some, a good number of projects that are 20-plus years, so we basically, we came up with the whole universe of projects that we think will make Eugene, you know, as good as we can be for walking and biking. And then we looked at, what, how much revenue do we think we could have, get over 20 years? And we used an aspirational number of 60 million. We, our estimate was, we're spending around 2 million a year, which is probably a little generous, because I think that probably includes like the money from the bond that's really going up, for the most part, the path rehabilitation. And then we figured, well, we're hoping to increase that by 50 percent. So that was how we got from 2 million a year to 3 million a year, and then multiplied that by 20 to get to 60 million.
So in our communication we got from here is, I think, the major emphasis on what we talked about, more of those lanes that feel safer for people to bike on. And then, so Wollingback here sent a piece to us about how we measure our success, and I'm sure we're taking that into account, those things that she was creating. Because that's an important thing for us to be able to see, how we're actually doing in creating a better system, not just how much of everything, but how we're really creating a better system. I just wanted to point out that I'm serving on that flexible funding committee, and they're, the whole, although that's just ODOT projects, but their major emphasis is multi-mobile, non-automobile, and they have a, they're very interested throughout the state in developing our bike and pet systems as part of our, of the, you know, fully realized transportation system. So that's something I hear a lot about. And then when we were at our MPC meeting this last time, the citizen advisory committee, that was their strongest interest, was those separated lanes and safe mobility, and they wanted that pushed forward as part of MPC's goal. So it's on everybody's, everybody's mind right now, and seems to be the next place that we really need to go to create, as you say, create that level of comfort to get more people out on the, out on the road. And one of the things that I've heard about the most, honestly, is people who wish they could take their families out, and feel like there's a lot of places they can't take them on the bike path, they don't feel safe doing it. So for us to let people know that's where we're headed, and we're going to try to build that kind of, those kinds of facilities in our community, seems like a really good thing for us to let the community know about. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
I think everybody really appreciates it.
So that will...
I don't know what was funded, Betty.
Oh. Sorry, Pat.
County Farm Road, you know, Matt Drive is planned to go through Crescent Drive eventually. Out in Bethel, at the end of Roosevelt Avenue, there's a, more or less a temporary bike path that was built from Roundabout to the Fermi Ridge bike path. Eventually, that's not going to be, it's going to be roadway someplace down the road. But I'd like to check on the viability of a temporary path perhaps from where Baskin Village is planned to be built, that would go to Crescent, that would alleviate some of the issues that some of the neighbors have, regarding pedestrian traffic to, through County Farm Road, excuse me, to Coburg Road. Just something temporary that would allow people to pass through until sometime before that property is low. But you don't know what was funded, that's hypothetical. And regarding, I thought the public forum last Wednesday, a woman who had two children called Hariana, and she talked specifically about County Farm Road, and I'm glad to hear that there's a potential for moving that up, as far as getting the sidewalks in there, because it's not just the Baskin Village, there are two similar-sized properties that are both zoned R2, that are going to be requiring regular pedestrian traffic at some point in the future. And just briefly on the lumpy ones, the dressing drive path, or dressing path, I first mentioned that, I think, to Christine Anderson, a long time ago, back in, I think it was 1996, when the bike path was placed from where it is now to Fermi Ridge bike paths. I suggested a path along there, and it was not a part of the plan, and I'm glad to hear that it is a potential, going to be a part of the plan. Makes a lot of sense, it links three parks to Jerry's, so.
I'll get chips there, what?
So just to finish off the thought I was on, which is, we've got a great system, and it can be much better. I think we're going to, people are going to clamor for more bike and more ped infrastructure as the price of gasoline goes up and as peak oil starts to take hold. And so I think this is going to become even more valuable. The problem I'm having is that we don't have any dedicated money to do any of this. And so we've got maybe aspirational goals of achieving a $60 million a year, but a lot of that's grants, and so we don't really have any way of funding this great list of projects that I think would be widely supported. So I encourage council to start thinking about a dedicated source of funding for these kinds of projects, otherwise, we're never going to get anywhere with this. This is the same problem we had with the roads, and repairing the roads, is that without a dedicated source of funding, we were just looking at a backlog that was ever growing. And this list is going to get bigger and bigger, too, and we're not going to make any headway. So that's my pitch for that. The other thing is, I also wanted to mention, well, a bike rider, Reed, and a bunch of other folks, that were on a much better weather day than we went on, it was a spectacular day, and we rode around and saw a lot of those bike facilities that we now have that make our system really great. And it was, and I encourage all councillors, if you can, to go do that, because it's really a good, you really have to see this stuff, and, you know, almost, you know, literally ride on it to get a sense of it. And it's a good way to go out and do it.
All right. Thank you, everybody, very much.
Thank you.